Good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin this evening's board meeting. Chief, has the front lobby been attended to?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. We request that all electronic devices be turned off and put in silent mode. Also, please refrain from using flash photography except during the special presentations portion of the meeting. I'm pleased to welcome the September ninth, 2025 school board action meeting. The time is six oh one PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. Board member Debbie Jordan and Armor Persons will be participating via Teams remotely. Pursuant to Board Policy zero six four dash one, they are eligible to vote on items during tonight's action meeting. Ms. Jordan and Mr. Persons, are you on the line right now?
I am, thank you.
I am also, thank you.
Thank you both. We'd like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's vision to be a world-class school system. On this evening's agenda includes invocation, presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance, acknowledgements, recognitions, public comment, consent action items, which include five items under Board Office, one item under Board Auditor, one item under Executive Services, nine items under Academic and Student Services, three items under School Choice Administration, one item under Strategy, seven items under Business Services, one item under Human Resources, one item under Information Services, one item under Legal Services, one item under Safety, Security and Fleet Operations, twenty-one items under Facility Operations and four items under Good of the Order or Other Business. Board members, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, move by Mrs. Chaviano, second by Ms. Juvenelli. Please record your vote whenever you're ready. Ms. Jordan, how do you vote?
I vote it. I vote it yes.
And Mr. Persons?
I am a yes.
I can vote.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries six zero. At this time, as accustoming the board, Mrs. Juvenelli will lead us in the invocation, after which Mrs. Chaviano will lead us in the presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance. Please stand, everyone.
Heavenly Father, we gather here today as a community committed to education, growth and compassion. We thank you for the opportunity to come together, united in our shared purpose to serve all students, staff and families. Today, we also pause with heavy hearts to remember Shyla and the Desamores family. She was a bright light in our school community. Her sudden departure has left us all grieving and we ask for your comfort and peace to surround her family, friends and everyone that touched by her life. Lord, let Shyla's spirit inspire us to live fully, love deeply, embrace each day with gratitude and kindness like Shyla did. Help us honor her memory by fostering this safe and supportive inclusive environment where every student can grow, thrive and feel loved. Grant us wisdom and discernment as we make decisions today, guiding us to act with integrity, compassion and a focus on complete well-being, including the safety and mental health of all our students. May this meeting be fruitful and may your presence strengthen our purpose to serve diligently, remembering that our work touches lives and shapes futures. Let us all live like Shyla. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Introducing the cadet who will present the national colors for our pledge of allegiance tonight, Lieutenant Colonel Brent Dahl, the senior army instructor for the Ida S. Baker High School JROTC program. Lieutenant Colonel Dahl dedicated twenty-six years to the army, fulfilling various roles in aviation companies and battalions throughout his career. This marks his fifth year as JROTC instructor within the district.
Thank you. Presenting the national colors tonight is Cadet Amare Naranjo, the Cadet Battalion Executive Officer for the Ida S. Baker High School JROTC program. Cadet Naranjo is a member of the National Honor Society and is an honor roll student. She is actively involved in the JROTC marksmanship team and has been the commander for approaching two years. Cadet Naranjo is planning on attending University of Florida after graduation and competing for an ROTC scholarship. After her four years, she plans to pursue her law degree. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda is character word for September. The character word for September is acceptance. Strength lies in differences, not in similarities. Stephen Covey. This design displayed on the screen was created by Timothy Mohan, a 10th grade student at North Fort Myers High School. Great job, Timothy. Now at this point, we're going to move, oh, we have acknowledgements for the month of September. The school board of Lee County acknowledges the following state-recognized events for the month of September twenty-two, 2025. American Founders Month, Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, September seventeen, 2025, and Freedom Week, September twenty-second to twenty-sixth of this month. So now we're going to move on to recognitions. So board members, please join me in the pit for recognitions.
Good evening. Joining me at the lectern tonight are Matthew Brendan Camp, Coordinator of Adult and Career Education, Dr. Mary Myers, Dean of the School of Business and Technology, Nicole Bailey, CyberCamp Coordinator, and other CyberCamp staff and instructors in attendance. Okay, all right, just you guys. That's good. Okay. The school district of Lee County, in partnership with Florida Southwestern State College and the Air and Space Forces Association, is proud to recognize the winners of the 2025 Cyber Patriot Summer Camp competitions. CyberCamp is a unique opportunity for middle and high school students across Lee County to explore the world of cybersecurity. Over the course of the week, students engage in hands-on labs in Windows, Linux, networking and system administration, all while learning the importance of teamwork and problem solving. Now, it is in its third year, the program culminates in a team-based Cyber Patriot competition where students put their skills to the test, defending virtual networks from simulated cyber attacks. This enriching experience is made possible through the generous support of our sponsors, Suncoast Credit Union, MASH Great Technologies and the Lee County Sheriff's Department. Their contributions allow students to attend at no cost and help provide the resources and prizes that make this program so impactful. When your name is called, please come forward to receive your certificate and join the board members and the superintendent in the pit for photos. The standard camp is designed for students who are new to cybersecurity. This year's champions demonstrated a strong grasp of the foundational skills taught throughout the week. Standard team winners were Hadessa Fennelis from Cape Coral High School, Rebecca Fennelis from North Fort Myers Middle School, Aranza Nieto from Challenger Middle School, Madison Williams from Mariner Middle School.
Want to get them all? Oh, the advanced. The advanced camp challenges returning students and those with prior experience to tackle more complex cybersecurity scenarios, requiring advanced technical skills and quick thinking under pressure. Please come up when your name is called. Noah Brand from Dunbar High School, Max Lipa from Dunbar High School, Tahias Abdaye from Asero High School, Santos Tamayac Shaw from Dunbar High School, and Jessica Moran from Dunbar High School. The board members and superintendent are proud to recognize and congratulate these students for their outstanding achievement.
Joining me at the lectern tonight is Kimberly Mulham, Coordinator District Threat Management Student Services. The National Save Promise Club Foundation honors and celebrates the creativity, dedication and hard work of youth who strive to create safe, inclusive and welcoming schools and communities. Each awardee receives national recognition, two hundred and fifty dollars to support their club activities, a Save Promise Club toolkit and an award banner for display on their campus. This year, out of more than four thousand Save Promise Clubs nationwide, the school district of Lee County is proud to have four schools recognized for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. These clubs were selected for their innovative programming, strong student leadership and meaningful outreach that inspired kindness, built connections and empowered their peers to speak up and take action. Their efforts have made a lasting impact within their schools and serve as powerful examples of youth-led change across the county. When your school is called, please come forward to receive your certificate and join the board members and superintendent in the pit for photos. From Challenger Middle School, Club Advisor Jennifer Puppi. From Diplomat Middle School, Club Advisor Catherine Howard. From Lehigh Senior High School, Club Advisor Judith Centrum. And lastly, although they could not be with us tonight, Oasis High School. The board members and superintendent are proud to recognize and congratulate these four schools, their club sponsors and the student members for this outstanding achievement.
Okay. Joining me at the lectern tonight is Daniel Knapp, Coordinator of Teaching and Learning. The Lee County AI and HI Innovation Challenge was launched last year by the Lee County Economic Development Office in collaboration with Horizon Council's STEM to Career Connections Committee. It is generously funded by the Horizon Foundation with additional awards supported by Career Source Southwest Florida and proudly hosted by the Edison Awards. These partners came together to create a virtual competition for local high school students, focused on solving a real-world challenge facing our community. Lee County's job market is booming, but we don't have enough workers. So students were then tasked with developing innovative AI-driven solutions to help small businesses in key sectors such as healthcare, logistics, construction, manufacturing and education, bridge the workforce gap through recruitment, upskilling, automation and smarter workforce planning. One outstanding team, the Solvably Strategists from Dunbar High School, worked under the guidance of their sponsor, Belinda Bell, to combine human intelligence with the power of artificial intelligence. Their solution, Smart Scholar, is an AI-powered tool designed to address the teacher's shortage crisis by reducing stress and workload for educators. Smart Scholar can generate curriculum-based lesson plans and assignments, provide substitutes with clear summaries of current and past lessons and keep students engaged even when teachers are absent. By doing so, it supports teachers, students and substitutes, helping to make classrooms more manageable and consistent. Now, when your name is called, please come forward to receive your certificate and join the board members, superintendent, your administrators and your sponsor in the pit for photos. Tonight, we're proud to recognize the following high school students. Hudson Belcher. Sharigna Madashidi. Alicia Satir. The school district recognizes Hudson, Sharigna, Alicia and commend them for their innovation, creativity, contributions to addressing workforce challenges in Lee County. We're incredibly proud of your accomplishments and look forward to the continued impact of your work. Great job.
Joining me at the lectern tonight is Dr. Nathan Shaker, Chief Academic Officer. The school district of Lee County is proud to recognize the recipients of the 2025 Florida Educational Risk Management Association, FERMA, Best Practices Award. Each year, FERMA honors school districts across Florida that demonstrate excellence in safety practices, claims reduction and the effective management of workers' compensation programs. At this year's FERMA Summer Conference, the school district of Lee County was awarded the Best Practices Award for achieving the lowest experience modification factor in the state and an impressive zero point seven one compared to the industry standard of one point one or one point zero zero. When your name is called, please come forward to receive your certificate and join the board members and the superintendent at the pit for the photos. This recognition reflects the outstanding leadership, dedicated efforts of Warren Wilson, ACA JD, Director of Risk Management and Internal Compliance. Kathy Richards, ACA CR SRM, CISR, Risk Management Coordinator. Their work has significantly improved the district's safety practices, reduced workers' compensation claims and strengthened our overall approach to loss management. The school board and the superintendent are proud to recognize Warren and Kathy for their unwavering commitment to excellence and the positive impact they've made across our district. Thank you.
Great job, everyone. Super impressive and this is all what the school district is about. We're going to move on to item E, public comment. Attorney DeBree Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you and good evening. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. Please complete a public comment card and put it in the basket provided. If you need a public comment card, they are provided by our staff. The rules concerning public comments are posted in the back and will be made from the podium in the front center aisle. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback on district issues such as duties, responsibilities, decisions and the general operation of the district. The school board is viewpoint-neutral during public comment. We ask that decorum be kept and respect be shown, which is what is expected when a government agency conducts official business. Therefore, abusive language defined as swearing, use of profanity or name-calling is prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing or a display of temper during public comment is prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order by the board chair or the board attorney. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy zero one six nine point one and may be removed from the chambers by the sergeant-at-arms. Per Board Policy zero one six nine point one, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are twenty, two minutes if there are thirty and one minute if there are thirty-one speakers or more. The maximum time allotted for public comment is one hour, sixty speakers. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone and I will call your names five speakers at a time. Please follow staff's direction when lining up. Mr. Chairman, there are fifteen individuals that would like to address the board and the time per speaker is three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Please ensure you've completed a public comment card to provide public comment. The card is a public record identifying those who speak and providing contact information to staff for follow-up. The cards are located with staff in the hallway. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board but has not filled out a public comment card? Okay, I am seeing none at this point. Whenever you're ready, please start public comment, Attorney DeBree Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will the following individuals please line up? Kaylee Jones, Christian Reyes, Robert
Kaylee Jones, Christian Reyes, Robert Daniels, Christina Stewart, Dana Burton. So, we're going to ask the speakers to step back a little bit, except for the first person who's going to speak. You can go to the microphone. And our Sergeant-at-Arms is giving direction. Thank you, Mr. Newlin. All right. You can go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Jones. I am a senior at Fort Myers High School. I am also a Girl Scout, working on my Gold Award project. This project is to increase awareness of the Safe Haven Law as it pertains to infant surrender and to secure a location to install a Safe Haven baby box locally. Since 2016, there have been thirty-three known illegal baby abandonment deaths in Florida. Just last year, there were two baby abandonment deaths in our state. A baby was found in a trash dumpster by a roofing company employee in March in Broward County, and in April, a University of Tampa student gave birth in her dorm room and then placed the infant in a trash bag on campus. The Safe Haven baby box is a lifesaving device installed on the outside wall of a fire station or a hospital that allows a mother to legally and anonymously surrender her infant. In March of this year, these boxes were added to our Safe Haven Law as a legal surrender location. Currently, there are seven baby boxes in Florida, with a new location opening soon in North Collier County and one in a planning stage in North Fort Myers. I've been working with Fire Chief McMillian in hopes of finding a location here in our city. I am here today asking that our school district authorize the posting of informational signs in all middle and high schools. These signs would contain information about the Safe Haven Law and Safe Haven Baby Box hotline number. By calling the hotline, they will talk to a licensed mental health professional, will walk them through all options available, and provide support along the way. Some of these mothers in crisis are young, such as a mother in Tampa. It is important to educate our older students of their surrender options should they need it. These options include surrendering an infant up to thirty days of age in person at a fire station or hospital, calling 911 if they don't have transportation, or anonymously in a Safe Haven baby box. If these signs help just one person, it will be worth it. I will be happy to collaborate with anyone from the school district on the design of these. Recently, Kentucky passed a law requiring all high schools to display posters such as these, and I believe that all future states will someday follow their example to help prevent baby abandonment deaths. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today and have a great night.
Please no clapping. We know we appreciate it, but it's a business meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christian Reyes. I am speaking from Dunbar High School as a senior. I have come today to voice complaints about various students for the cell phone policy. First, Florida does not ban high school students from using phones during non-instructional time. The Department of Education is studying six districts before issuing any statewide model policy in 2026. This means we're living under a state law. It's this district choosing to be as strict as possible, and these choices have various consequences. Right now, if a major incident were to happen at school, the district's office has told us several times to use our Chromebooks to contact our parents to make sure we are safe. And this is not only dangerous, this is also very risky considering how we cannot contact anybody outside of our own school district, Lee Schools. I also would like to challenge the argument that nostalgia should not be the basis of the argument, considering how if you were to say, "We didn't have phones back in my day," I could use the exact same argument to bring up, "We shouldn't have metal detectors nor should we have..." Sorry. Anyways, point being. And when teachers compare this to our standard workplace we have today, it is seen as even they have access to their phones on a day-to-day basis, including during their lunch. And even in the most strict environments in the average workforce, you are expected to at least have some leisurely time on your phone. I would also like to bring to your attention the fact of the phone policy is a bit harsh, and I feel we can mitigate it and find some middle ground between us and maybe the law. Thank you guys for your time.
Good evening. I'm Christina Stewart, and I'm here to speak independently of some concerns I have at my school building, although I believe some of these issues are happening at other buildings throughout the district. I teach in the only BSI school in the district. We started the year without our building being fully staffed, and as of yesterday, we're still not fully staffed. Our building has also inherited two extra or more ESE classes, taking us up to eleven units. Our principal had the privilege of interviewing and hiring as many as thirty-two positions before the beginning of the school year. I have asked questions from various people that I know throughout the district, questions such as, "How is it that the one and only BSI school opened the school year without being completely staffed? How is it that the one and only BSI school is rated a Tier Two, even having difficulties filling positions, is in the East Zone, and other schools are ranked as Tier Four?" I understand money was allotted to entice people to come to the hard-to-staff school buildings, but in our case, the incentives were not enough when teachers could choose to go to other Tier Four schools and make more money than they could make at the BSI school. I also question why, as if we are the only BSI school, how do we not have the support of the district to retain the class size numbers we currently have, keeping the current number of teachers in our own positions? I question how the district expects teachers that have been part of the building for multiple years, staying on our building because we love it, to continue to support it. How is it that the district is supporting teacher morale and promoting teacher recruitment and retention in our situation? I would like to know how the district expects the teachers that have stayed in our building, our veteran teachers, have welcomed and mentored new teachers, are expected to continue to do their jobs, as well as take on more tasks without being discouraged and also without being so stressed, having the stress affect us emotionally and psychologically. If this district plans to retain teachers, especially in hard-to-staff and BSI schools, this situation needs to be readdressed and a new plan implemented moving forward. Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Joe Phillips, India Palencia, Denise Everly, Anthony Call, Lou Navara.
My name is Robert Daniels. I'm going to play a little game called Then and Now with you. Then is the school year 2010-2011. Then, we had 5,393 teachers on staff by the reports submitted to the state DOE that anyone can access. Now, in the 25-26 school year, fifteen years later, we currently have 5,182 teachers on staff by the numbers given by the bargaining team a couple weeks ago. So, that's the district's own numbers. By those numbers, this means that there's 211 fewer teachers fifteen years later, begging the question of how there could have been a communication that we only had thirty-seven open positions, considering that back in 2010, we had 80,820 FTE-equivalent students in the district. Yet, this year, the reported numbers as of July were 120,876, full-time equivalent for the students. You'll know that's different from the actual number of students, because that's the weighted FTE, including the extra funding or extra percentage of a student represented by ELL and exceptional students. Back in 2010, with the average of roughly fifty-four hundred teachers, the average teacher pay adjusted for today's dollars was $68,100. As of two years ago, the average pay for the district was $59,281. That's down $9,000. I don't have any information for this year on that, because bargaining is still in progress. The current bargaining field agreement, the most recent options, would bring the starting salary up to finally meet, adjusted for inflation, what I started at fourteen years ago. So, we're finally fixing starting teacher pay, but we are not fixing the average teacher pay, the experienced teacher pay, the advanced teacher pay. The question is, though, when we've gone from $80,000 to $120,000 in FTE, where has the money gone? Because it's not going to the teachers. The percentage of the general fund allotted to teacher salaries has decreased by nine percent as of last year. I wasn't able to come earlier. I don't know the current general fund total, but I bet it's even higher now. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dana, and I'm here to bring up a problem with Island Coast High School. I want to know why Island Coast High School is one of the only high schools in Lee County that only has two lunch periods, because the principal doesn't want to staff additional people there. I heard you, Ms. Carlin, were there the very first day and saw how bad this lunch cycle was. Kids aren't getting lunch, they're not getting time to eat, there's nowhere for these students to eat. And again, why is Island Coast, as far as I've heard from many parents and people in this district, is one of the only high schools that only has two lunch shifts, because they refuse to staff for three? I think that's wrong for parents, that is wrong for kids. You have kids going home every day hungry because they're not being served lunch, they don't have enough time to eat with lunch. If a teacher allows that student to go into their classroom to eat lunch so that they have somewhere to eat, that becomes an issue. This is a major issue where kids are not getting time to eat properly. Thank you.
My name is India Palencia. Tonight, this board is set to consider spending another $90,000 on outside lobbyists, on top of the $180,000 we're already paying to lobbyists who, by measurable standards, have not brought in a single dollar for our district. That's $270,000 for lobbyists, while our teachers and staff are working two to three jobs just to cover rent, groceries, and gas. And here's the irony: Board members are paid the same as every entry-level teacher. Yet, most people might say that the workload is not the same. Teachers are in classrooms all day, every day, working hard to make sure our kids have the best educational outcomes. You hold monthly meetings, and you meet people in the community, and some of you are even exploring the idea of not physically showing up to these meetings. Imagine if teachers did that. Fiscal responsibility must mean more than balancing numbers on a spreadsheet. It means making choices that reflect our values. Right now, our spending says, "We can find a quarter of a million dollars for lobbyists, but not to ensure you can live on your paycheck." Based on your own workshop today, $270,000 could go to some unmet needs like sun shades, HVAC repairs, cabinetry, flooring, restroom renovations in needed schools, or even your compensation improvements. Lobbyists are supposed to get us resources. If the two we already pay haven't delivered, adding a third doesn't solve the problem, it compounds it. We have better, more affordable ways to advocate. We can build business partnerships in our community with community-minded businesses and groups. We can work directly with legislators. All of you are elected officials sitting up there. You have that ability. In fact, two are out doing it right now. We should be trained to do that. We can make sure that we mobilize our community. You have an entire group of people who come here regularly, who are happy to speak out on behalf of our Lee County students. So, I'm asking you to vote no on this contract. Let's stop spending on what doesn't work and start investing in the classrooms and people who make our schools run. Our students are watching how you spend their future. Thank you.
Hello, I am Smokin' Joe. They say the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. Well, congratulations. We, the citizens, have been your idiots long enough. We have begged for fair pay for teachers, bus drivers, and staff. You smile, nod, and treat our words like background noise, like we just read the back of a shampoo bottle or something. Alvin residents have shown up religiously, pleading with you not to bulldoze their community just to bus in kids from elsewhere, and still you act like the district doesn't already own land where schools are actually needed. And then, there are the investigations, those magic reports that always seem to come out tilted in the favor of the protected ones. You call it oversight, we call it a cover-up. But here's my favorite part: Somehow, the district is broke when it comes to paying staff, but flush with cash when it comes to hiring lobbyists. And wouldn't you know it, these lobbyists sure look a lot like campaign managers with shinier titles. Quid pro quo, you call it strategy, we call it taxpayer-funded back scratching. There's a saying in education, "If you can't dazzle 'em with brilliance, baffle 'em with bull, explicit and needed, don't worry about your hammer." And you've got to baffle them down to a science. But here's the thing: The citizens are catching on. We're not your idiots no more. So, if you insist on ignoring us, maybe you should stop running the school board and start running the circus. At least the clowns would be where they belong. And if that stings, good, because nothing's more pathetic than watching these people dressed in suits act like ringmasters when, deep down, they're just elephants shoveling their own crap. Now, I heard this about y'all wanting to start doing remote working when you're on vacation. Look, if you can't come in here once a month and avoid your jet-to holiday, you don't need to be on this board. I'm Smokin' Joe, I'll be dissecting this district. Any parent, teacher, administrator that wants to come on, dissect the district, contact me or my staff. Have a good night.
My name is Anthony Call. Again, on another board night, I've lost faith so I could come to this board meeting. It was nice y'all put a two-page thing up on your website saying that what I said on Mr. Joe's website on his podcast wasn't true. But tell me this: Last year, we had 620 routes or more. We couldn't get it done. Miraculously, we cut everything down to 555 routes. Our seniority list came out today. I looked at it. Yeah, 540 regular drivers. At any given time, we have thirty people that called out, not including our people on workers' comp or out on medical leave. But yet, you know, I lied. I can't figure that out, because when I bid, I bid on a 7.5-hour route so I could spend time with my family. When I showed up for our first meeting in our district, I was handed an envelope that said, "Now, I run nine and a half hours every day. When I get there, now I take another route." So, in nine and a half hours, I squeezed in where I run from North Fort Myers to Cape Coral, back and forth, two schools in the morning, three schools in the afternoon. That was really fun in the rain. I'd like to know where y'all getting your numbers from, because I don't see it. And I also don't see where I did my training of twenty-something hours, and I'm looking at my paycheck, and I got paid sixteen. When I went upstairs to my supervisor and asked her about it, she says, "Oh, you got to email this person." For what? I worked it. I'm a bus driver. And then I get another email. "Oh, guess what? You've been a bus driver here four years." I've carried my CBL since I was eighteen years old. I had a commercial driver since I was twenty-one years old. I carried my Class A, fully endorsed. You know what the district decided to give me a raise as according to my thing? One year. Gave me thirty percent. I carry more qualifications than most drivers. I've towed everything, I've driven everything on the road, and you tell me I'm only worth thirty percent? You wonder why people are talking about leaving. There's drivers there that are just here for retirement, to make the extra money and get the benefits. You're running them ragged, and every day, they want to quit, but they need the benefits and the money. They don't want the hours, they want quality. That's why I went from a Gen Ed bus to an ESE bus. So, I'm... That's why I went from a gen ed bus to an ESE bus, because I'm tired of not having quality. Now, I meet my parents every day. They're happy. But I'm still doing nine and a half hours on the ESE bus. I have one student that's on my bus for over an hour, a special-needs child. So, and then you extended our area from Bay Shore Elementary all the way to Nelson Road in Cape Coral. But no more drivers. You just keep extending stuff. You said we are the fastest-growing, one of the fastest-growing school districts in the state of Florida? Pay us. Get us drivers, because what you're doing is you're going to sink us so deep that you're going to have to call AMS to come help us out. That's why I see twenty, thirty vans lined up for private drivers to take kids home because we can't do our job.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Will the following individuals please line up? Jessica Lane, Stacy Cruz, Jaclyn Perez, Robert Rio, and Leanne Leo Vera.
I've shared video clips from past meetings where many of you raised serious concerns about building NNN High School in Alva. In those videos, you warned about safety, wildlife, nearby gun ranges, and costs. Mr. Fisher reminded us to watch costs. But today, you are moving forward with the very project you once said was risky, irresponsible, and too expensive. The school would have been halted immediately, or the school should have been halted immediately the moment Phase One costs jumped by twenty-two and a half million dollars. Phase One is not construction approval. It exists to test if a site is responsible and affordable. That increase was a red flag. Instead, the project advanced, just like Riverdale. More costs overran, thirty million over budget, and public trust was lost. Now, NNN is already at a hundred and sixty-two million dollars with no South Florida Water Management District permit, no FGWA water sewer plans or permitting, and a shifting timeline from 2027 in meetings to 2029 on paper. This is exactly what Phase One was supposed to prevent: runaway costs, broken promises, and loss of trust. And the human cost is even greater. Lehigh Acres is a majority-minority community. These students are not seat fillers. They deserve safe, local schools in their own neighborhoods, not long bus rides in Alva to serve developers. Your own words in these videos show you knew better. Our kids are not pawns. Halt this project. Hold the workshop you promised. Restore fiscal responsibility, transparency, and trust. There's one other part. Your own words in those videos show you knew better. The kids are not pawns. Where is my ending? Oh, okay. Also, did I miss somehow the vote for Phase Two approval? Was the Daniels family even asked for their opinions or consent before attaching Ruby's name to this school? That is not transparency. That is coercion of the community, and, most disturbingly, of school board members. Also, I just want to tell you that OCR Title VI complaint has been accepted by the federal DOE. So I would like to caution you all that you see how this works out and plays out and see what their decision is before you decide to move on with this NNN school. Thank you.
I'm over my COVID, but, you know, it took a while, and I think Ms. Giavonelli thought I got it here two months ago, but I got it at those mean-spirited people at the city of Cape Coral. I'm very upset that the school board and the district have told parents and teachers that there is a certified teacher in every classroom. While there may be a teacher that is certified, that does not mean they are qualified to teach the class. Mr. Fisher, in our call, you said the DOE says that they are certified, so it counts. No, it does not, sir. You must be certified in your subject area to teach. I taught. If you and your superintendent gibberish held true, why are you not paying supplements to the teachers who hold master's degree who are not in field? DOE and school districts in Florida, you look that one up. You pay no supplement. I got it for thirty years until they changed it all. And I never was an administrator. I had an MS degree in administration. Dr. Carlin and the board, you can fool some of the people some of the time, and you know the rest. In that light, I have requested the public records for the certified teachers by name, in field, and out of field. Also, the public record of the list of all teachers who are out of field by certification. You keep these records. I know, I have them from a couple of years ago. Now, the public records department has ignored me. It's a month now. So I think to ask you, what are we hiding here, Dr. Carlin? I want those documents to be released, and I urge the press to do some of their investigative reporting. I know them. Literacy, another point. Forty-eight percent for third graders in the district. But Dr. C. told all the parents, "They're all A and B schools with a couple Cs." Well, that's fine, but let's talk about literacy. They're F, forty-eight percent literacy in third grade. I met with Mr. G. Lombardo and the VA. He's going to support, so he told me, an amendment to have Veterans Day closed all across the state. Now, I'm going to work with him. I asked for your support. I guess I owe two apologies here. I'll make them quick. Ms. Giavonelli, yes, you did go to Washington, but you went on your own. And Mr. Fisher, yes, you said there was not enough money. But like I said, I found you money.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Jessica Lane, and I'm here on behalf of two senior students from Island Coast High School who I feel as though have been targeted and treated unfairly on an in-house investigation. I am here as a parent and an advocate for two students from Island Coast High School, both of them who are seniors, who I feel have been targeted and treated unfairly in an in-house investigation treated by administration and the coaching staff of the football team. I have also submitted an appeal to Lee County District and as well as the board. I have sent emails as well requesting attention to ensure that this investigation was done thoroughly and fairly. Both of those boys are student athletes who have a bright future, and they are being robbed of the opportunity to be able to succeed and further their love and their desire for sports. I am asking for you guys to please pay attention, look into, and investigate how the administration handled it. I do not feel that the evidence, quote-unquote, that they state they have is facts. I feel they went off of impulse. I feel like they went off of their liking and disliking of the children. And that's it. Thank you.
Robert Rio, Norfolk Myers. I work for the district. I'm not wearing my uniform tonight because if you go somewhere with your uniform, they see Lee County Schools. What's going on with schools? Not enough teachers, blah, blah, blah. It's not worth fibbing. Be honest with the people. We're taking it, we're driving out. It's not worth it. You're putting us down by doing what you're doing. Point number two: Wages. I got my little email today. I'm getting three percent. The shirt I'm wearing today says Jeffrey U. Construction LLC. He's been here for years. I trained him in Connecticut. He worked at Beliterra, right? So how did you guys do the study? Not verifiable? I sent him two slips that says State of Connecticut, HIC number, my home improvement contractor's number. I got three percent. So I got a guy. If you go to Dunbar, that floor was done. The guy works for us. He got three percent. He's laid floors for years. He still does side jobs for Wayne Wilds. He got three percent. What's going on? Last thing: Bus drivers, okay? Train them. Mr. Jared, you're here. I had a bus cut me off so I could stop at Westwood. He was in a fire lane, went over three lanes to stop. They do that a lot over there. Somebody's going to get hurt. That's all I want to talk about.
My name is Leanne Leo Vera. I have nothing written down. You're welcome. I thought a lot about what I wanted to say, and one can only imagine all of the things that I could possibly talk about. I don't know why I feel like I have to say that I was born here in Cape Coral. I went to school here. I was a greenie. I know what it's like to get a really great score on the FCAT and your English teacher give you a Sprite from the interact club. I know what it's like to be at a football game and not necessarily enjoy going to football games as a high school student, but hey, let me microwave that questionable patty and sell it for ten dollars. All that to say is that when I started to go back to school, Florida State, FSW, minor time at UF, thankfully, when I decided to go to my daughter's school after receiving an AA in 2021 during the COVID era, I become an Eagle. And through the school district of Lee County, I also became an FGCU Eagle. I thank you. I thank you for the opportunity to be a part of something. And I think that everyone in this room isn't here if you feel differently, correct? So thank you. Thank you for, Dr. Denise Carlin, what you tried to do to put a certified teacher in every room. I understand your need and why you had to do it. However, it created a lot of demoralization in our community, not just as those in the education system, but also as a parent. So, for instance, you see these new teachers come into the school, and yes, you want to support them, but as someone who's already been in the school system, in this community, and love this community and everything we've been through, it's hard. It hurts. And when you give an opportunity, you want them to succeed. Again, we wouldn't be here if we didn't want our community to succeed. I merely ask is that you take what we are saying, and I thank you for this platform because they are systems that exist for us to come together to not combat, not challenge, but merely just have a circle of a table that says, "Hey, maybe we can do better." So, for instance, if you are going to move forward with an incentive, please, let's go collaborate with our peers and our union. Otherwise, if this doesn't exist, what else do we have? Thank you.
Before I get started, I've been getting text messages that the public speakers are not being heard on your live feed. It's not being shown. So can you put my clock back at three minutes, please? I just wanted to state that. Good evening. We are a multi-billion-dollar school district, yet the systems we use to manage public funds are outdated and sloppy. Our bidding system looks like something a middle schooler put together. For a district handling billions of taxpayer dollars, this is unacceptable. These are the bid sheets for NNN, and they are questionable. As board members, you approved this contract. You need to go and look at all the crossouts and how points were taken away from certain builders that went in favor of the builder who got the project. We also have five million dollars' worth of steel sitting in maintenance yard. And these are the pictures now, and this is the pictures in '22. Five million dollars rusting away and rotting. The steel was purchased for the school in a cero called AAAA that was never built. The district told the public that the steel would be reused, but here we are, years later, and it's still rusting away. So what are you guys going to do about that? Meanwhile, our teachers and bus drivers, the people who actually make our schools run, are overworked and underpaid. Teachers are stretched thin. Bus drivers are barely making a living, and yet this board insists on claiming that you have enough staff. That is not true. The district has created a system that confuses the public and hides shortages of certified teachers and bus drivers. That's not transparency. That's called deception. There's also the matter of the questionable investigation in transportation. More than ten thousand dollars of district property went missing at three o'clock in the morning, and yet there's been no meaningful investigation by professional standards. I received an email from them through a public records request that it was an informal investigation. How can the public trust this district with billions of dollars when even theft at this level isn't properly investigated? The community deserves honesty, accountability, and respect for the people who serve our students every single day. That starts with fixing the bidding system, addressing waste, paying our teachers and bus drivers what they are worth, and being truthful to the public. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. As a board, we truly, truly appreciate your feedback. Also, kudos as well to the students that exercise their First Amendment right. At this point, we're going to move on to the agenda's consent action items. Item R, or item F to Q, and then item R, approval of consent action items. Next is the approval of action items in the agenda under consent. Documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven business days prior to the board meeting. We're expected to review all the material, and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions they have regarding recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or worked out with board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under unfinished business? First, Mrs. Giavonelli.
I have none. Thank you.
Mr. Ribble?
I have one, F2.
Okay. F2. And that was audit committee approval?
Yes.
Yes, sir? Is that it? Okay. Ms. Jordan?
I will be pulling H1.
Okay. H1 will be for state lobbyist services, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any others? Okay. Mr. Persons?
No, thank you.
I have none.
Okay. Mrs. Langford Fleming?
I have none.
Mrs. Chaviano?
I have none.
Okay. And I have none. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve tonight's consent action items with the exception of pull items F2 and H1.
I'll move.
Okay. We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Mrs. Langford Fleming, second by Mrs. Chaviano. Please... Please record your vote whenever you're ready. Motion is approved, 7-0. Before I go on to other items, Dr. Carlin, are there new administrators that you wish to introduce tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very proud to announce the appointments upon the approval of the consent agenda of the following individuals. So congratulations to Ryan Turner, Assistant Director, Payroll. Luke Strominger, Coordinator, Government Relations. Christopher Brightman, Assistant Principal, Estero High School. Kevin Calfee, Coordinator, Human Resources. Jeffrey Newman, Assistant Director, Financial Accounting and Property Records. Matthew Braden Camp, Director, Adult Career and Applied Curriculum Education. Jill Morland, Assistant Principal, Norfolk Myers Academy for the Gods. Kristen Rice, Assistant Principal, Mirror Lakes Elementary. Ashley Sheplak, Assistant Principal, Mirror Lakes Elementary. Natalie Walters Grant, Assistant Principal, Colonial Elementary. Congratulations to our newly appointed administrators. We cannot wait to see the great work that you're going to do with our children. And congratulations to our folks that are here at the district office. We look forward to working closely with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Carlin. Congratulations, everyone. As I always do, I echo Mr. Persons. Please have a great evening tonight. Enjoy, and we'll see you tomorrow. So any administrators in attendance, we'll take a quick break if you guys want to exit the boardroom. Everyone, there's still one more person. We apologize for that. Dr. Carlin?
Our apologies. There is one more Assistant Principal, Lauren Amiel from Benita Springs High School, Assistant Principal. Our apologies. We will absolutely be excited for you and can't wait to see you at Benita Springs. Thank you.
Congratulations. We're gonna resume. We're gonna go into unfinished business table items. The first item up is item F2. Dr. Carlin, please read your recommendation.
Thank you very much, sir. My recommended action is approval of the appointments to the Audit Committee effective January 8, 2025, for the terms indicated.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Moved by Mr. Ribble, second by Miss Juvenelli. Discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Ribble.
Okay. The reason I pulled this item, it's kind of confusing. It says January 7, 2025, School Board Meeting Agenda at 6:00 PM. And it said that, it says on here, approval of appointment of the Audit Committee. And then on the second page, it looks like we already voted on this. But the reason I pulled it was, I think we're getting ourselves into a situation, again, where some of our committees forget what their purview is. And if I reminisce back six years ago when I was on strategic planning, that's how I first met Kathy Dupree Bruno, because we had to bring her in to referee our committee at the time with strategic planning. And we're all over the board arguing about all kinds of things the district should be doing, except for working on a 10-year strategic plan. So I'm hearing things from various folks about this Audit Committee and some of the players that are on there, one of which I appointed. And I just want to caution the folks that are assigned to this committee that take a look at your charge, which is real easy in the second paragraph. It says you're there to make recommendations to the board in the selection of its board internal auditor, to make recommendations to the board internal auditor, and with creating an annual audit plan, and thirdly, to make recommendations to the board concerning audits. Anything outside of that is not your purview and we shouldn't be discussing. So although I made the motion tonight to approve this, and I believe these three folks can do this, I understand we have a new chairman, and I think he knows the direction that he needs to go in to keep this committee on track so that they worry about audits and not other things that shouldn't be on their agenda. Those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Superintendent Carlin?
Yes. And Mr. Ribble, you bring up a very good point. This item was brought forward to correct the term expiration date, which was approved on January 7, 2025. So we just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Do you need anything else, Mr. Ribble?
No.
Any other discussion? Ms. Jordan or Mr. Persons?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
I have none also.
Okay. Will this be roll call? Okay. Rowan, get ready to vote. Signify by saying aye or nay. Miss Juvenelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ribble?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Persons?
Aye.
Mrs. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Ms. Chaviano?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion carries 7-0. Next up is item H1. And whenever you're ready, Dr. Carlin, please present your recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Approval to award request for quote number R257509TA for state lobbyist services to Ballard Partners, Inc., as indicated on the attached tabulation sheet. This request for quote will be effective for three years, beginning September 10, 2025, through September 9, 2028, with renewal options for three additional one-year periods upon the written agreement of the vendor and the district for up to $90,000 for the first year of the base contract period of September 10, 2025, through September 9, 2026. Approval authorizes the superintendent to execute all related documents.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Ms. Jordan, as you pulled this item, if you want to give any discussion? Oh, whoop. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I forgot that motion. Just thought that way. Is there a motion to approve item? A board member's a motion to approve item H1?
I'll make the motion to approve H1.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Miss Ribble and second by Miss Langford Fleming. Sorry about that, Ms. Jordan. Now you may proceed.
That's okay. Thank you. Well, I had already sent you my thought process on this. And I will tell you, I do have a problem with this one. We had a meeting on March 4, and we spoke about the, when we were awarding the contract to Ballard Partners for the federal. At that time, I brought, I had pulled that item, and I brought it up about the state. I asked the superintendent to please make sure that she reinstated the fact that we would not be using them in the state of Florida. And it is documented on YouTube, where you could go back, and anybody could go back and look at it, which I said that to you all, the time and the minutes of that action meeting where that was stated, that we would not use them in states. My other issue is, this is $30,000 more than any of the other ones that were presented. I know that they were asked to go out and get some quotes. So it wasn't as formal as it would have been. And then I do have concerns of the objectivity of the scorers on this. Nothing against the people who scored them, but I do have an issue with that, because I think that it could be a little bit of a conflict. And then even, I will say this, being up in, here in Washington, and I want to put this out there as well. Everything is paid for by my own personal self. I have talked to people, the government relations from other districts in the state of Florida and others, and they are the ones who are doing this. They're not lobbyists. They actually work for their district. We just hired a new person, so now we have two of them. Between the two of our government relations and all of us doing our due diligence and our job, I don't see the need for this at all. And my other thing would be, when is Gray Robinson's contract up? Thank you.
Mr. Ribble?
Yeah, I have a comment to make on this. And I'm probably gonna take my three or four minutes on this one, because I have a lot to say about it. So as many of you folks know, I was on the council, and I was mayor of the village of Estero. And I became, right off the bat, in 2015, we became a village. I was assigned to the Florida League of Cities, where I became the vice president. And then I wound up being the president of Florida League of Cities for the years that I was mayor. Now, you gotta remember, the state of Florida, we have 67 counties, 411 municipalities. So my point was, I was at a meeting my second year with the Florida League of Cities, it was 2016, up in Tallahassee. And there was someone there from another firm, and he asked us, how many folks used a certain law firm? 70% of the attendees for these 411 cities raised their hand that they were using the same law firm. Now, what do you think happened to those folks when there was money available for septic to sewer or water or whatever else, or whatever else is on your plate in your community that you're struggling to do, repaving or whatever the case may be? They use a cookie cutter approach, these large firms, and everybody gets a fraction of the piece of the pie. That's how it works. And that's when I ran into Dane Eagle, who was an elected official, was 2015, Ray Rodriguez. And at the time, we have a, we still have a problem with this a lot better than it was. The Estero River was totally polluted. We needed to get a study so we could apply for money to clean up the river, because we have trailer parks on both sides of the river that just dumped their sewage into that river. Now, we've come a long way since then. But Dane Eagle was a person that I worked with for six years, and Ray Rodriguez, and we got a lot of action, a lot of doors opened, and a lot of funding that we didn't have. Moral to the story is, I know that Dane Eagle is the real deal. I don't care what anybody says about who he knows and who he doesn't know. I'm talking to you as an elected official from the village of Estero, where he has a lot of credibility. And his last two years, if you remember when he was termed out, from 2020 to 2022, he was assigned as a Director of Economic Development for the state of Florida. You don't put somebody in there that's incompetent in that office to have that title and to bring business into Florida, which he's done an excellent job. Until now, he's back in what he does best, which is lobbying. So I totally am gonna support Dane tonight and the appointment of this contract. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ribble. Other discussion? Miss Juvenelli? Mr. Persons? Or somebody in line? Were they asking? It made a sound.
No. I was just gonna ask a question, please. On, this is not about an individual person. It is about a company as a whole. So I just want to make that very clear, that it has nothing to do with an individual person. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Juvenelli.
So for me, I just want to emphasize the importance of ensuring that Ballard Firm is actively advocating for Lee County-specific lobbying needs. Our priorities are unique, and it's crucial that their efforts translate into tangible outcomes, particularly in securing funding that directly addresses our community's challenges. We need clear, measurable results and regular updates on their progress. If the results are also benefiting other counties without specifically advancing Lee County's interests, that's not a win for us. And it raises questions about the value of continuing with Ballard. We did not invest in this partnership to see our resources benefit others at our expense. If we do not see meaningful progress or commitments towards bringing us the necessary funding focused directly on Lee County's needs, I will need to reconsider our partnership with Ballard and whether their contract continues to serve our best interests. It's essential that we work with the firm whose efforts are aligned with our goals and who can deliver results that benefit Lee County. Our community's success depends on effective advocacy, and I trust that if the firm is truly committed, they will prioritize our needs and demonstrate the impact of their efforts. So for me, like, I love Dane Eagle, too. So I would have loved to have seen Ballard been our lobbyist for the state, because I'm not seeing much results in federal. But that's kind of the, now we've got the cart before the horse a little bit. So I am on the fence on supporting this because I'm not seeing any results federally. But I do believe, and I am concerned with hiring, Ms. Jordan brought up a good point, hiring another government relations. I feel like when we go to Tallahassee, we do a lot of it for ourselves. And we have a lot of good contacts that we've been doing, advocating. And I think we've had great leadership between the superintendent and actually our government relations that has been going to Tallahassee and working for us. So I'm really a fence rider on this, because I feel like, like I said, the cart before the horse. I would like to see them state versus federal. I'd love to hear what anybody else has to say before I really make my decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone want to go? Before I get my comments, I have comments.
Yeah, I would like to say something. Mr. Persons? If I may?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I've been looking at this, and like Ms. Jordan, I have talked to a lot of people while we're up in DC, what they're doing in their states. It just seems to me spending $90,000 on a state-level lobbyist is excessive. I believe these funds could be better invested directly into our schools and classrooms. We already employ a government relations director, who I have found is more than capable of representing our district's interests at the state level. In addition, our board has established strong, personal relationships with members of the local state delegation. Almost all the boards has these, can communicate with them locally. This includes connections with the State Board of Education, the Chair of the K-12 Budget Subcommittee, and both the current and immediate past Senate presidents. These are all extremely important people. I think most of these legislators would rather talk to us personally than even a lobbyist. I also want to point out that in the past, we needed a lobbyist simply because they would not talk to the board. The board was fractured, and it was very difficult to get anything done. And when the board changed, we had three new people three years ago, and then two new people now. We're open arms. They're embracing us, and I think it's really great. These relationships give us direct access to these decision-makers. I also found out that Orange County School District, which is double our size, functions effectively with only a government relations director and without any additional expense of a state-level lobbyist. I have no criticism with the firm that we're looking at. They're one of the best in the state. I think actually all of them that applied were excellent firms. But I just think at this time, with our unique position and existing relationships-
But I just think at this time, with our unique position and existing relationships and our current capabilities, I just don't see a need for this additional expenditure. At this time, I just believe our district is best served by relying on a strong foundation we already have in place, rather than committing to this unnecessary expense. That's all I have to say on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Anyone else before I give my comments? Okay, I'm going to proceed. So thank you to my board members for their feedback. I will be an absolute yes vote on this. So as Mr. Persons said, we have spent years rebuilding the reputation of this board and this district, especially with local officials as well as the state. And we've made a lot of inroads, and we've been joined by a fantastic superintendent, as well as two other additional fantastic board members. We've had on board a fantastic government relations team, and they have done an amazing job. But I think part of this is, we need to understand that we need somebody first up in Tallahassee, and we're not going to be up in Tallahassee all the time with that. We need somebody from a team that knows the governor's office, the Speaker of the House, and the senate president, and be involved with the experience with that. And also, it's time to take this district to another level. No offense, Mr. Persons, I'm not concerned about what Orange County does. I want Lee County to be leader in the state, which we're showing to be. And part of that is not just money. I hear about results about money, but we need to talk about policy, and we've had some wins in this district. We've now gotten the point that we now have respect, again, from local officials in Tallahassee. Not just money, but we need to look at the big picture of policy and the implications we've had with that. Even look at our federal side, just the change we've made in the Army Corps Engineers, our government relations team, as well as the federal lobbyists that have helped reduce four or five years on our Army Corps Engineer permits down to a year and a half. How much that has helped us. Now, on a state level, I want us to be a player that helps work together with Tallahassee. When they're coming out in policy, I want to be partners with them. In the past, that has not been true, and that is because, the reason, the ability of where our district has been. It's nothing against anyone else, and I know all of us will continue to advocate. But as I said, we can take this to another level, that we can help shape the state. As I said, I want to be the leader in the state in academics, in transportation, you name it. And that's what I think we'll do with this. And that firm has talented people, just, you know, I want the people that have those relationships day in and day out, have the resources, just the same as we do at federal level. And going back to, you know, I appreciate everything, the work of our prior lobbyists, I really mean a lot for that. And I want to appreciate and recognize Superintendent Carlin with a transparency, because if I recall, under the prior administration, there was no RFQ. It was pretty much told who that person was going to be, and the board had gone along with that. So I want to note that for the record. So I appreciate that, Superintendent Carlin. Anyone else have any comments before we go to vote?
I do. Mr. Fisher, when you just said that the prior superintendent, when we had the last lobbyist, the board members actually brought them forward. The superintendent did not bring them to us. We brought them to the superintendent, and then it was brought back to us. But we were the ones who initiated that. And again, I must remind everybody, this conversation happened on March the 5th. So if we can't even stand by the words that we say when we're not going to do something and we just do it, how do we have people trust us? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
But again, there was no RFQ during that. It's a big difference. Anything from Madam Superintendent before we proceed? This will be a roll call vote if we're ready. Okay? Signify by saying aye or nay. Ms. Juvenelli?
Nay.
Mr. Ribble?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Nay.
Mr. Persons?
Nay.
Mrs. Langford Fleming?
Aye.
Mrs. Chaviano?
Aye.
Aye and aye, motion carries four-three. Thank you, everyone. We are now going... Good at the order. Okay? So I will start with Ms. Juvenelli.
Thank you. I'll be really quick. I just wanted to say thank you for all the, I went to all my schools, but right around, it took me about three weeks, most of it the first week of school, but I attended all of them, and they were all just really busy with new school, but I just did a quick visit with every one of them in my district, too. And like I said, they were busy with the first couple of weeks of school, and it was really nice, though. They were really happy to see me. I always bring a little something, so I brought cookies and for them to share. So they kind of needed that sugar at the time of day that I was there, most of the time. So I just wanted to thank all the hard-working staff and teachers, because the beginning of the school year is like, almost very chaotic. You have kids that don't know where they're going or how they're going there. I mean, it's just really, it's, I don't know how they do it, actually, the staff. But I also wanted to thank all the speakers tonight, because they were very, every one of them that spoke, it was important. And we missed you, Mr. Daniels, so welcome back. And there were, Mr. Roberts, we missed you, too. So I just wanted to let all the speakers know that we are listening, because it's really important to hear, especially some things that's going on in another school, at a high school. I've already sent my emails asking about that information and what's going on with, you know, two lunches and so forth. The other thing, I attended last Friday, was the Success Academy, and I had lunch with two students from there and two students from the WIPAP, which is Lambs. And listening to those students, they were ready to get, the two of them were ready to go back into their traditional school setting and doing well. And the mindset of the new principal is awesome. He doesn't want to keep them there. So I look forward to getting the information, the data, how long they're there, and how fast they move on back into their schools, because that's not the place for their, that's not the supreme place to be educated. And they need to be back in the schools that, either where they came from or another school that's best suited for them. I also wanted to bring the attention that Monday, the first of September, was Labor Day, and we all celebrated that, and I'm just excited that everybody had time to revamp and recoup, because everybody needs that time off. And especially, Labor Day really started with our trades, and our maintenance department, we don't have enough people there. They're short-staffed, and we know it, and I just want them to know that it's important, their jobs are important, and that I hope they were able to relax on September 1st. I also wanted to bring up the fact that it's important to make sure that our students are safe, and safety is a priority. And we represent all students in all zones, so I will always champion that, because we need schools in the East Zone right now, and we can't afford another day to delay it. And there was some information that was given today that had a time difference or a date difference, and the triple N school is supposed to be done in '27, so I'm looking forward to that being done in 2027, not 2029. And the only other thing that I want to talk about is this board and how great it was to have passed this budget, even though it was, it's a little less money. We're trying to cut costs, and I really appreciate the staff that worked hard to do that today and presented the budget. You know, I'm proud that we were able to pass this budget while maintaining our commitment to fiscal responsibility. During my time on the school board, I've never seen such dedication from our superintendent and staff to work together in finding meaningful cost savings while still supporting our students and staff. I think that's really important. Next year, we could have even less money, so I think operating on less is more, and that's what I hope that we can do and do better. I look forward to bargaining, finishing up soon, next month. They're working very diligently and hard on that, and then we can discuss more about what's best for teachers and their salary. I think, I recognize that it's important, and I will always champion for teachers and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Juvenelli. Mr. Ribble?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, since I always go real short. I'm going to take up a little bit more time this time. So let me start on the two positive things. I was sent a nice email here the other day from my alma mater, Kutztown State University, where I'm a big alumni, and I have quite a few scholarships invested up there. A few folks came down here to go to school, by the way, that are on my dime, which I'm real proud of, and so hopefully they'll stay here. But I was sent an email here the other morning. We had a Cape Carl graduate that just graduated here this past May by the name of Sage Thiodo, and she's a freshman this year on the volleyball team and a starter. Now, they lost their first game to Chestnut Hill, but she was credited with five assists. So we had a local lady here do well in Pennsylvania, and hopefully she's going to get her teaching degree and come back here in four years, and we'll welcome her with open arms. Then, back in my hometown of Astero, if anyone watched the game on Sunday night with the Bills versus the Ravens, if you noticed, they had a kicker they had to bring in that was retired. And now, you know, it just goes to show, some of us old guys still have it. This guy's forty-one years old. He flew in that morning for the game and kicked the winning field goal. His name is Matthew Philip Prater, and he was born August 10th, 1984, and he graduated in 2002 from the great Astero High School. So someone in my district did well. Now for the bad news. We had our benefit meeting, which should have went for three hours, and unfortunately, we only scheduled it for an hour. We have our great committee man here, Dr. Rusi, who's assigned to our committee, and I know he was making faces at me during the whole meeting, because we couldn't believe how AON, A-O-N, who's the provider of the benefit, came to the meeting, they knew we had an hour, and they stuffed us with three hours' worth of information, hoping that we were going to vote for the package they were presenting for this year. And I got to tell you, we held our ground, and we're making them come back. Because if you take a look at our expense for this past month, it went up two million dollars, from ten-point-three million to twelve-point-three million. And that's only with an increase of one-hundred-and-ninety-five folks. So we're going to have to take a look at this benefit plan. You know, our folks work hard, we pay big bucks for this plan, we've got to make sure we're getting the biggest bang for our buck, and that they're doing the right thing. And if you would, there's eighty-three slides here, and if you would see some of these slides, you need to have a triple magnifying glass to read these slides. Just totally unacceptable. So we sent them back, and we'll see what they come up with next month. But if they want to have a contract with us, they're going to have to sharpen their pencil and do a much more professional job. And I salute your involvement and your tenacity, Dr. Edrich. You do a great job. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ribble. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I just really, I want to give a shout-out to Nicole Bailey. She is the one who has ran the Cyber Patriot camp for the last couple of years. She has worked so hard to do that, and I have watched it grow, and I just really wanted to give her a shout-out, because I know that a lot of that falls on her. So I just really appreciate the fact that she is continuing to do that and give our students another opportunity there. Same with the Promise Clubs. All the schools need those. It does wonders for the kids. So I do appreciate that. And thank you, Ms. Juvenelli. When you were speaking about cutting costs and meaningful, meaning cost savings, again, I just can't help but look at our teachers, our bus drivers, and everyone who comes up and keeps speaking to us, and then we just spend another thirty thousand dollars. I know it's just thirty thousand dollars, but every cent to me does matter, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was stated again. And thank you so much. Appreciate it. We're doing wonders up here.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Mr. Persons?
Yes, it is hard work, and, boy, is that a lot of walking up here. But what I wanted to do is inform the board that in our next action meeting, I'm going to be bringing forward a resolution to support the removing of mandatory vaccines from our students. The state is already going to, education looks like they're going to be doing this for several of the vaccines, but there are other vaccines that are mandated in state statute. I believe this is a parental rights. I think a parent knows, and should be making that decision of whether their child has to take a certain vaccine or not. And we've done that with many other things. I mean, we're for parental rights on masking and many other issues. So I think we should stay consistent, and I'll be bringing a resolution for that. And if the board passes a resolution, I think we would be putting that also on our legislative agenda for the legislators, to ask them to do that. So that'll be coming forward, and, you know, there's a lot of talk about whether it causes autism or not. Twenty-two years ago, there was one in a hundred-and-fifty children were autistic. Now, it's one in thirty-one is autistic. Something's going on. So until we know that, I think people need to be more cautious than they are now. But anyway, I'll be bringing that resolution forward. I'll send everybody a copy of it. I just want you to be aware, and the public to be aware, because I'm sure there'll be some people against it and some people for it. I just wanted to get that out there. So I'll be the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Persons. Both Ms. Jordan and Mr. Persons have a safe flight back. Mrs. Langford Fleming?
Yes, thank you. Yes, it's been great to get back out to our schools, kind of, I always let them catch their breath before I hit too many at one time, because chaos. It's just an exciting time, for sure. I also want to give a shout-out to somebody who probably doesn't get a lot of recognition, but I had the opportunity to work in our United Way, kind of our giving room over here, and they, Evelyn and her crew, have it down to a science. And I know that there are many ways that our community members can partner with United Way, so just wanted to bring that attention to the public. I was able to go to Success Academy a couple of weeks ago, followed by a pep rally, so lots of activities. But Dr. Restino is really changing the culture in that environment. I almost worry a little bit that the kids are going to love him too much to want to leave, but that is, you are right, Ms. Juvenelli, his goal is to get back, and he's like, I don't want to see you again here, but that's exactly the purpose of the program. So thank you. I just want to sort of piggyback off of appointments. Juvenelli said that safety is our number one, or my number one, priority, and I know that every day, at every event, here at the district, school, extracurricular, what it is, that that cannot be, that we cannot cover all of those bases without the hard work of Chief Newlin and our amazing SROs, like the gentleman here. Thank you so much. I'm always so appreciative that you're here in the evening, and just, and thank you to those out there that are working hard every day to keep our students and staff safe. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Langford Fleming. Mrs. Chaviano?
Yeah, so mirroring all the first-week fun, and I did the tours, and I also try to kind of stay out of it, because it's a little hectic. I have one that does transportation. I do drop off on another, and it's chaos on both ends. So lots of love and respect in the morning to all the parents, and I hope you have your coffee, because it's crazy, at least by diplomat, I will say that. But no, I've had benevolent tours success in all the schools, and just thank you to the teachers for everything that you're doing in the classroom. I get updates on a daily from my daughter and the other twenty-three lovely ladies. I get to coach on a daily basis of what is happening in all of our classrooms, and I love when they're excited, and they're excited about what's happening, and their projects and their assignments, and what they're doing. That makes me happy, and I know that they love what they're doing, and when they love their school, and they love their teacher, and it's just one little chip for that age group, for them to love school, I think, is so much better. So thank you for all the hard work and everything you're doing in the classroom, and for all of our sports that are kicking off, and all of our games that are happening, and the pep rallies that are happening. I love it. I love the school spirit, just all the things. It's just an exciting, I think, fall-type of year in Florida, even though it's very hot. It's just a fun time, I think, for the school year, so yay, keep trucking on, looking forward to next month. But that's it, just safe and fun, just good soft entry into the school year. I will take it.
Is that it, Mrs. Chaviano?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I'll give my comments. I'll try not to go too long. Uh, like everyone else, first day of school visits, I visit every school in the, the West Zone. Um, I went into fray, so hopefully they didn't get too ticked off at me, so, but they're good people doing good work, so, um, appreciate that. Um, really just some, some great things going on in this district. Uh, so, I'm excited. Kudos to Superintendent Carlin and her entire team for, uh, really just a fantastic start to school. I mean, there's always issues, we know that, but, um, as I said, just the attention you and your staff, and the principals out in the schools, I'm, I'm very impressed, and I appreciate that, so. Dr. Carlin, uh, and Associate Superintendent Matthews and I had an opportunity to go up to Osceola County and visit Neo City, um, which is essentially a high school set aside for STEAM, you know, science, technology, engineering, arts and math. I had to do that fast, but, um, very impressive, very interesting things going on with some certificate programs up there, including the, the use of AI and just the collaboration. So, there were some really interesting, uh, ideas, um, that I think we can kind of bring back, because we have fantastic students in this district, and just some of the opportunities that we could kind of help present with some of the things we've learned up there is a, a great learning experience, so. Uh, many others have attended some football games, had some, uh, you know, very interesting ones around here. I, I love the spirit. I attended a pep rally at North Fort Myers High School. That was an amazing experience, so for those of you who haven't been to a pep rally before, I would highly suggest that, the schools, so. Uh, last one, I'm gonna try not to embarrass him too much in the crowd, so we were actually joined by, uh, Lucas out here, who is a foreign exchange student coming over, uh, goes to school over here, so I believe he's a junior, so. And he is actually here to see how government and the schools work here, so I think that's really amazing, and I appreciate him taking the time to, to go and take a gander how things go. I, I told him, I said, you know, it's interesting, it'll be an interesting meeting, and especially, you know, I hope you learned a lot during, uh, public comment as well, so. That's, um, all I have at the moment, and I will turn it over to Attorney General.
I don't have anything. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Superintendent Carlin?
Thank you, sir. Um, just a, a quick reminder that September is American Founders Month, and we are very proud in our schools to be celebrating, uh, that particular month. We've also initiated Table Talk with our, our families. Uh, that's a social media campaign out there. And of course, uh, the whole goal is to discuss with our students information about the Constitution, the principles upon which our nation was founded, and the patriots who came before us and paved the way for all of the wonderful freedoms that we enjoy as a nation. So, that's a, a big month that we're kicking off. Um, I also would like to just piggyback on our, my colleagues on the board, uh, relative to, huge kudos to our staff. The beginning of the school year, I equate it to lifting a plane off the tarmac. You know how you're sitting on the plane, and you hear the engines start to roar, and then it runs down the, the runway, and then you feel all the energy taking that off, right? Taking off into the sky. That's what taking off, that's what kicking off a new school year is like for all of our employees, almost thirteen thousand strong. So, I just want to give a huge shout out to our teachers, our principals, our assistant principals, um, all of our support team members, and our central office. We are one team, one vision. We're all in this together. And just so incredibly proud of everybody's role that they played in getting that huge plane off the tarmac. And I like to say, we're cruising at that thirty thousand level of foot level right now. Sure, absolutely, there are bumps along the way. You know, uh, if you ever want to have fun, go, uh, ride on a bus the first day of school with one of our bus drivers, and see all the, all the fun that they have. They get to greet our children. Sometimes the little ones get on, you ask them their name, and they just smile at you. And you ask them their name again, and they smile at you. So, it's just a huge kudos to our bus drivers, um, and all of the patience, and all of the wonderful efforts that they put into their job each and every day. And then our teachers, working extremely hard to welcome our children back. Uh, we used to have a saying, get them in, feed them, get them home, uh, but our teachers do so much more than that. They are engaging in the Florida benchmarks instruction on day one. I had the privilege during the first week, just like you all did, to get out and to visit, uh, almost twenty schools. So, it's just fantastic to get out there, and then I will be kicking off my ninety-minute visits to each and every school throughout the school year. My goal is to, uh, walk classrooms and to see the great things that our teachers are doing, and also to have conversations with them about what we can be doing better as a district. So, um, just thank you to our board members for getting out there and being boots on the ground and, and supporting our teachers and our schools. Um, I also want to give a shout out to our board members. You know, there's a lot of information that goes out on social media. There's, you know, sometimes good news, sometimes bad news that comes to board meetings. And I just want to thank you for your relentless focus on the work, on the work. We are headed to becoming an A-school district, number one in the state of Florida of the Big Ten, and things that are so important to us. We want to hear from our public. We love when our public comes to speak with us, because it gives us an opportunity to address their concerns. We also invite our public to make sure that they contact their school teacher, their principals, all of those folks. Um, here at the district office, we have regional associate superintendents who, and HR, folks that are more than happy to, to help, so please reach out to those folks. You're certainly always welcome to come to a board meeting. We'd love to see you here. It's nice to see parent engagement. But please know that there are also people out there that are ready and willing to help you. But I just want to compliment our board for keeping focused on the work. Uh, couldn't agree with you more. Ms. Juvenelli, safety and security is our top priority, and we will do everything possible to make sure our students are safe. Uh, and also, student achievement is extremely important in this district. Right now, those of you who've heard me say this many times, we are number nine out of ten of the ten largest school districts in Florida that cannot remain. And I just want to thank our team here, as well as our principals, for all of the work that they are doing with walkthroughs, with helping to provide conditions in classrooms that make it conducive to our teachers' teaching. So, just thank you all very much for a great beginning of the school year, and thank you to our board for keeping focused on the work. That's what's gonna help us become an A-school district. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Carlin. I just want to echo that. It's been a, a long day, and I truly appreciate my colleagues up here, how we've had some very tough conversations, which we sometimes differ on, but it's been so professional. And I love the discussions we have. I just want to say, I appreciate all of you, so. Now, next scheduled meetings of the board, on Tuesday, October seventh, there'll be a school board workshop at one PM, followed by a school board action meeting at six PM. At this point, having no other business but come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned, and the time is seven fifty-three PM. Have a good evening.